Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for attending tonight's meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council. Thank you. I apologize for being late. Stacy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Here.
Mayor Budge.
Here. Thank you very much. Stacy, would you read all of the information about joining the meeting?
Yes. So first, can I read the cable cast?
Sure.
Metro Cable. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Wednesday, June 7th at 6:00 p.m. and Sunday, June 11th at 9:00 a.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. A DVD copy can be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have been in closed session, and I will ask the city attorney for a report out of closed session.
Thank you. This afternoon at 4 o'clock, the city council met in closed session on one item of anticipated litigation relating to threatened litigation concerning the industrial center and logistics center sites. And the city council received updates from and from legal counsel and took no other reportable action.
Thank you, Adam. As we always do, we are going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and with an invocation. And I do see Dr. Dan. So I have asked Darrell Langwell if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to stay standing for an invocation from Dr. Dan DeShawn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome Dr. Dan, and I will tell you, for those of us who were at the Memorial Day celebration this week, his remarks were inspirational.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Please join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we honor and praise you and thank you for all of our many blessings. Please let us never take them for granted. We ask now to pray for our city leaders, for the staff. We ask for encouragement for all the tough decisions they have to make. Help us, Lord, to be good citizens and become active in the affairs of government and those that represent us. Let us never stray from our moral courage, self-discipline, and love of fair justice. I pray that all our relationships would be grounded in your love for us. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Dan. Please be seated. And so we have no presentations tonight, but we do have an opportunity for public comment. Stacy, do we have people signed up for public comment?
Yes.
Please remember that citizens wish to address the council for any item on the agenda that's not on the agenda are welcome to speak at this point. And we ask that you take three minutes. And please state your name and your neighborhood. And if you have something to talk about that's on the agenda tonight, then we will absolutely call on you at that point in time. Stacy.
We will start with the public comment for those members of the public who are here in the council chambers, and then I will go to Zoom and then to email. Jeffrey Vernot.
Welcome, Jeffrey.
Jennifer Garcia. And then Stanley Sedelko.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Vernot. I live in the Anatolia area of Rancho Cordova. I came here to address a problem that might not seem serious, but it is serious across this nation. I visited your Rancho Cordova Police Station on May 23rd and posted all around that station are signs that say photography and video recording is strictly prohibited. Well, in short, those signs are 100% illegal, and they are indeed causing federal litigation for communities throughout this nation. There are four laws I will cite for you today to justify that claim. The first one would be a Supreme Court precedent, Smith v. Cummins, decided in May of 2000, which allows photography of public employees and peace officers during the course of performing their duties. The second law I would cite is Coolidge versus New Hampshire, decided in June of 1971. This is the plain view doctrine, which police use so that they're not violating somebody's Fourth Amendment right if they're looking through a window on a traffic stop. This is also the reason why signs like this are probably at your police station. It's designed to protect people's private information while they're filling out public forms. But that reason gets nullified with California Penal Code 148, Section G, which specifically states public photography is not prohibited, and public photography cannot be used to create suspicion of a crime. So if you can see it, you can photograph it. It's basically what that law is saying. All of these laws are based on the First Amendment of our Constitution, which gives us freedom of press, and that's why public photography is a protected activity. Well, you may be asking yourself, what's the harm? Those signs have been there since the station was built. They've never been a problem before. Why worry about them now? Well, 20 years ago, when Rancho Cordova was incorporated as a city, camera phones were not standard issue for your average American. I got time for one example. New York City. They had a 61-year-old woman enter the 69th precinct of their station. She needed to get a police report for the purposes of turning it into her insurance company because a glucometer had been stolen from her. During the course of her interactions with the police, things became heated. I don't even think she realized there was a sign with big red lettering right behind her when she pulled her camera out and said, "Hey, calm down because you're being photographed right now." The police tackled her. They broke her arm. New York City has a law at the municipal level, the state level, and there's a federal law saying what she was doing was completely legal. So I don't know what kind of liability New York's going to face over that, but she was elderly, she got her arm broke, and I'm just basically here to give Rancho Cordova a chance to avoid those kind of problems altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. We will refer this to the police department and to legal. We appreciate that. Thank you. Jennifer.
Good evening, councilmembers. Jennifer Garcia, Stone Creek. Is it possible to get the overhead on so I could show a picture real quick? I have a question on to what something is. Not sure if you can see that. There's kind of a side by side. Earlier this week, this was up for about 24, 48 hours. Turn it around. There you go. Do you know what that is? That might be a question for our Public Works Department, but is that sound? Is that video? What is that recording?
Micah, can we refer that to somebody?
We can. I do believe that's the traffic counters.
Traffic counters?
Correct.
Because there's nothing going across the road.
Albert is in the other room and can help answer that as well.
Okay. Yeah, it wasn't going across the road like most traffic counters that I had seen. So I was just a little curious because it was up there and then it was all of a sudden gone. And then my other question is, I've been trying to find on your website kind of what the hierarchy of the city is, who reports to whom, kind of who is accountable to whom? Because there seems to be a lot of no accountability with issues and things and communication. So I was just wondering if the city can address that at some point in time or get back to me kind of what the hierarchy of the city is and if we are having problems or concerns with certain departments. Where do we take that? Who does that go to?
Thank you, Jennifer. I'm sure the city manager will be able to handle that. And Albert is in the back of the room to talk to you about whatever that gadget is. And I can tell you, having been attacked by one of the across-the-road thingies, if you put it up on a camera, I'd much prefer that. So congratulations. Valerie?
Stanley Sedelko.
Stanley. Stan, welcome, Stan.
Good evening. I'm Stan Sedelko, resident of Rancho Cordova since 1978. I think we face a big issue that, over the last year, I've had the opportunity to review the zoning ordinance for various reasons. And I've noted throughout several sections, there are either outdated definitions or unclear references that steer you in the wrong direction or give you a wrong presumption. We're facing a short and long-term issues related to some of these problems. And though I know that's not addressable at this time, these issues should be considered for all of Rancho Cordova by the city council. I believe the city council should consider further action to clarify the intent of allowed types of uses and reevaluate the definitions of the uses and appropriate zoning. Many jurisdictions throughout the country have encountered these types of issues and updated their ordinance to clearly define them to help them mitigate the impacts of various types of development and avoid what we and future residents in this area of our city will now have to deal with. No matter the person's viewpoint, I suggest that more definitive information related to this would alleviate much of the frustration, confusion, and conflict in the future. I appreciate the position the city is in with respect to current proposed projects and do appreciate the steps council has taken to prevent or address some of these issues. I hope you understand the position the majority of residents in this area feel we are facing. We are the ones who will suffer the damage to our local air quality, run the risk of potential health issues for ourselves, our children, our grandchildren. We stand to lose significant value in our homes, and we will suffer traffic impacts on a daily basis. Unfortunately, this could go on. I hope I made my point there. Finally, as a design professional, I recognize the need for smart development and growth. It's critical. Without growth, communities die. With unbridled growth, communities fragment and become isolated areas. Smart, educated, pro-development growth, communities remain healthy and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. I do know that we are embarking on a general plan update this year. That's in the budget. Thank you very much. Stacy.
Those are all the speaker cards that I have for general public comment. I'm now going to go to Zoom. And E. Weininger, your hand is raised. I'm going to go ahead and then mute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Eric, welcome. Eric, are you there?
Sorry, I was muted. Okay. Good evening, everyone. When I think about this whole public participation process, some words come to mind: fragmented, broken, asymmetric, unbalanced. And what this means to me is that I see two forces operating. On the one hand, there is plenty of evidence that the city of Rancho Cordova is trying hard to define its place in the world. I have complimented the city folks before in this regard. You bought another property from the warehouses. Yay, good, great. But on the other side of the ledger is the disconnect between what is said by various city council members and what the city attorney ends up implementing. That choice of words is purposeful. What we see here is the tail wagging the dog. If a question comes up, the city attorney is asked about it, and that seems to be the final word. What then of our city council members, who are elected by the actual and real citizens of the city? What do they do? They say their hands are tied. And I would say that they supply their own rope, as they were and are the custodians of the fate of the city, starting with the original signatures on the community destroying developers agreement that takes more from the community than it gives to it. Did anyone actually read the darn thing? And therefore, in my estimation, they have failed in that mission. They have had 20 years to control what happens in this city, and now what? They have to kowtow to a developer who will build some monster buildings.
Eric, you really are discussing a later agenda item. Can we ask you to bring that back?
This is a general comment about all warehouses, including logistics center that is not on the agenda and...
Well, and another one that's on the agenda. So can we ask you to bring that back?
Well, I have other comments that I'd like to make then as well. So if I can...
That's fine. We'd be happy to entertain them then.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no additional hands that are raised in Zoom. The city clerk's office did receive a number of public comments sent via email, and those were given to us by the following individuals: Linda Davis, Adam Fuentes, Michelle Martinez, Patricia Jones, James Rodriguez, Elizabeth Smith, Christopher Garcia, Daniella Miller, Mary Brown, Emma Smith, Karen Brown, Mary Johnson, and Valerie Knipschild.
Super. Thank you, Stacy. So at this point, instead of going into council reports in the city manager's report, we have a colleague on Zoom at a remote location, and he has asked if we would go ahead and do the consent calendar items while he is still able to be online. So if that works for everybody, then we will call the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are deemed routine and can be approved in one vote unless one of the council members or somebody in the audience would like to comment on a very specific consent calendar item. Do we have anybody that's turned in a speaker card for any of the consent calendar items, 16.1 through 16.12?
The city clerk's office has not received any comments for items on the consent calendar.
Okay. Colleagues, Donald, is there any need to pull an item off the agenda?
Terry, none of the calendar?
Thank you. Stacy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, Donald. Then we'll go back to the council reports.
Do we want to do the consent public hearing items as well?
I don't mind. I wasn't asked about that. But if you would like to include that, it doesn't matter.
Just if we want to take those votes before, I probably will not be here for them if we take them in order.
Okay. No, that's fine. We have consent public calendar items, 17.1 through 17.5. And Stacy, we'll open the public hearing and ask if you have received any comment on those particular items.
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for items on the consent public hearing calendar.
Okay. Colleagues. Okay, the public hearing is open. Is there anybody who has come to speak to those items tonight? Okay, hearing done. We will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move 78.2.
We have a motion and a second.
You gotta be faster, Siri.
Call the roll, please. Next time, Siri, you get credit.
Go ahead. You can give it to her.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we're going back to... Thank you, Donald. We're going back to council reports. Donald.
Um, I... Yeah, I'll be brief and just say that I apologize. I couldn't be there in person. I'm traveling for work this week. And I have a commitment in about 20 minutes that I need to leave for. Didn't have much to report. I just want to thank Rancho Cordova Little League for all of their hard work. I know my son even played in a tournament over the weekend. I do now, Linda, where Cbar C is and what it is. I will say that I think that the area that we have for Little League fields, even over at Alstom Park, is relatively the same. They just don't have T-ball fields that I saw of any kind. But I want to commend all of the RC Elite teams and the junior team, I believe is the name of that one. There was also their... You know, they had some tough beats on the ones that I saw, and they didn't make it to the final day in some cases. But even my eight-year-old was out there doing it. But just want to thank Cassie and the entire board and everybody else that worked so hard this season. And I know we've had some disagreements or some different opinions about where the future of Little League is or where it should be or where it should be built or where we should do things. But at the end of the day, there are a lot of hardworking people that didn't get paid that spent the last seven or eight months of their life working on that stuff. And while I didn't get to spend any time this year at the softball fields because we were following around two different kids at the Little League fields, I know Rod Borba and the rest of the team over there worked just as hard to have a great season. So thanks to all of them for all of your hard work. You make this community a better place. That's it for me.
Thank you, Donald.
Thank you.
Garrett.
I'll make it quick. Memorial Day was amazing, always. I can't wait till we... Hopefully, we can have it back at the VA. And Pastor Dan DeShawn that was here gave an amazing speech. He's a vet, and he happens to have spent probably the last 20 years in Christian ministry over at the VA Hospital trying to get those individuals reengaged with the community and save them. And that's amazing. Met with the GPA twice. One, drove down there and they didn't have the meeting. Second time, drove down there, and we were able to talk about that. That's the people that find... They help with projects, and they find land, so you can buy land and wetlands and stuff like that.
Um, HCP.
Yep. HC, double H P.
Not GPA.
J A P. Double X M Y O P Q R S T.
Habitat.
U V, doesn't matter.
Thank you so much, Garrett.
And the last one.
South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan.
Once again, we're back to the double A, X, Y, Z. And then lastly, I met with the library. We are... Which is nice to see is their meetings, when I first took over for Linda and she had saved it, the meetings were like three and a half hours of yelling and screaming. And now, if we can get quorum, it takes about 15 minutes. The library is so well managed and so well put together, and all they want to do is put a library in Rancho Cordova and figure out where the next Rancho Cordova, where the location that's going to be best fit to actually have our own city library. So that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Siri.
So councilmember Garrett and I met with the Cordova Parks and Recreation Team.
Tell them it's the first one that's happened in 10 years.
Pretty much.
And so we finally got one of those, and it was amazing. That was awesome. Sorry.
Yes, we're making progress on that front. We talked about a couple of items, the homelessness in the area, what are the improvements that are being done and how repeat offenders are being taken care of. And we talked about the Cordova Recreation Park Optimize Plan. Now, this is a document that provides guidance on how the parks are going to be over the next decade. They did how the CRPD did a community outreach. They talked about the demographics in the area and what is the improvement plan that is going to happen. I know a lot of you might have been involved in this community outreach program, and it's all up in the website. If you want to go take a look. I don't know if they're still open to taking feedback, but that would be... There are going to be two more, virtual and in-person community outreach programs. But also, you can send in your comments over email. I think it's crpd.com/optimizationplan, where you can link, go in there and give your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Siri. David.
Couple of updates here. I'll echo the Memorial Day comments. That was an outstanding job by our speaker that day and by the Cordova Community Council in putting that on, one of the nicest, I think, in recent memory. It's really, really an inspiring event. Thank you, Donald. You gave the RCA update for girls softball and Little League. They both concluded great seasons. I am an invited speaker to a conference in Berlin next week.
Berlin?
Berlin. Next city is holding an impromptu meeting in Berlin, at Berlin City Hall. So they asked me to go there and be a speaker, so I will be out of the city next week from Tuesday to Friday. And I think that means I'm flying more than I'm actually there.
For sure.
Yeah. So it's going to be a real pleasure trip, right? In an airline seat. In any case, it's good to see Rancho Cordova on an international stage.
For sure.
And finally, we held a massive track meet this past weekend. We also held a large softball tournament. And there was a performance by the Symphony d'Or of Rancho Cordova at the Performance Center at Cordova High School. And there was some activity going on in the park. I'm not quite sure what it was. I was at the track meet.
It was loud.
It was loud. But all of these things worked pretty well together in that same space. Yeah. It's kind of amazing how many things we can have go at one time. In Hagen Park, Cordova High, Mills Middle School. It was very nicely done. And I can report, our own throwers, who we have supported here through the Rancho Cordova Track Club, won all of the guys' throwing events. So we won hammer, we won shot, we won discus, and my son won javelin. And this is a very prestigious track meet. So it was a great weekend for Rancho Cordova sports. That is my report.
Amazing. So yes, HCP didn't happen. Regional Transit happened. And they're still celebrating the fact that they're getting a lot of money to provide low-floor cars. And I have to tell you, for anybody who's ever had trouble climbing those stairs into the old light rail vehicles, this will be a great event. Staff and I attended the, I think it was the 50th anniversary of the Asian Chamber of Commerce. And then it was on to celebrations. We had three graduation events. I went to Mills, I went to Mitchell, and I went to Cordova High to celebrate a granddaughter graduating. But I was there. I mean, I was there for that anyway. The Sacramento Valley Live Steamers has actually been in the park for 50 years now, and they had a terrific celebration, complete with a reenacting of the Promontory Point, Utah Meeting of the Engines thing. Memorial Day was wonderful. There's no question about it. As Garrett said, Dr. Dan's remarks were extremely on point and very important. The Park District has constructed a new pathway around Federalsville Park, making Federalsville Park more usable than it's ever been before.
Was that city funding?
Yeah.
With city funding?
Yeah. And they celebrated that. It was actually a request from the neighbors that originated it. And it was a great example. As David said, the Symphony d'Or played on Saturday afternoon. It was a totally American celebration, starting off with American jazz and Aaron Copland, and ending with "America the Beautiful." It was a wonderful event. And somebody in the audience today won an award. They got a... Won an auction award. And then we've been doing tours for our new elected officials, and we completed it today, last week... Excuse me. With a tour for our new supervisor, Rich Desmond. Rich has been on the Sacramento Board of Supervisors for a while. But now, after reapportionment, the third district of Sacramento, which he represents, also includes everything east of Sunrise. And then Pat Hume, who was elected to replace our longtime supervisor, Don Vitoli, represents everything west of Sunrise Boulevard. So it has been an incredible... May was an incredibly busy month. And by the time we get to the end of June, we will probably feel the same. So I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Micah.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick updates for me. One is I wanted to let the community know and the council know that, you know, we were under contract to close on the property that has been talked about previously for the Elliott transaction for the 40-plus acres. We did close on that property a week and a half ago and basically are now the owners, sole owners of that property. So that has closed. Second, I just want to recognize that the city staff team, as tonight we approve the budget for the next two years, on the... that the city staff team is, tonight we approved the budget for the next two years on the, on the consent calendar. And we really want to honor and recognize the team, and that's a full-city effort team of everybody involved in putting the budget together. And so really want to appreciate the team that put that together and, and got that approved on tonight's agenda. So that's my two updates. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Micah. So at this point, having done the consent calendar and the consent public hearing items, we'll go on to 18.1. Stacy, will you read the item, please?
Yes. Stone Creek Industrial Center Major Design Review Amendment Project Number PLND 11210020.
Thank you. Darcy.
Good evening, Mayor Budge, members of the council. Persephone's just uploading the presentation for tonight. But the purpose of tonight's meeting is for, staff is returning with the resolution and documents for approval of the project. We're going to go over a few modifications from the project from the last meeting, and then we'll just do a brief summary of the project. The applicant team is here and they also have a presentation they'd like to go through, as well as their noise consultant is on Zoom that can address any noise questions that may arise. So again, this item is the Stone Creek Industrial Center Major Design Review Amendment. These are the few bullet points I just hit. A few project modifications that are different from the last time when we were here in May. The applicant has agreed to limiting the hours of operation for truck movements between 6:00 AM to 10:00, or 10:00 PM, and that's condition of approval number 21 in your packet. Additionally, based upon some conversations at the last meeting, there will be lighted signal ahead signs at the approaches to the Zimphondale Drive intersection with the Baroque and South driveway. Just briefly going through the project as we just did this in May, this is a major design review amendment for four light industrial warehouse buildings with internal office accessory totaling 602,004 square feet. This includes various improvements on the site such as parking, lighting, landscaping, and it's located within the villages of Zimphondale Special Planning Area. On the screen before you, surrounded in the red outline is the 40-acre project site. Just a few things to highlight on the site plan. The project is conditioned, as we discussed last time, to relocate that emergency vehicle access point on Baroque over to a location on Ossette Way. That will require coordination with engineers and, and city staff, as well as CRPD, to find the appropriate location of that. So the project was conditioned, that's why you still see the site plan showing it, in its existing location. The site plan has not changed since the last meeting. So as you can see, the four buildings are located on the site with buildings A and B being set a significant distance off of Baroque and Ossette Way. The closest building to Ossette Way is 250 feet, and the closest building to Baroque is 306 feet. In terms of the loading docks, the closest one to residential on Ossette is 511 feet, and the closest to homes on Baroque would be 614 feet. These are the typical building elevations. As we stated at the last meeting, the applicant has reduced the height of the buildings to a maximum height of 40 feet at the parapet. The windows along the top, those will be, I'm going to mess this up, I'm sure, spandrel glass. So spandrel glass, you cannot see in and you cannot see out. So those windows along the top will be that type of glass material. Before I move on to the environmental and on to the recommendation for the project, I wanted to take a pause to see if the city attorney's office wanted to address anything.
Sure. Thank you, Darcy. At the last council meeting and in public comment, for this meeting, we did get some questions about declaratory relief. I decided that I, having not discussed that with the council in closed session, wanted to talk briefly with the council about that in closed session this afternoon, rather than put it in the staff report. In very short, declaratory relief is a form of, of pleading in litigation whereby you can ask the court where there is a controversy for determination on a particular narrow legal issue. And the, it requires that the issue be the proper, a proper subject for declaratory relief action, and that there be an actual controversy involving judiciable questions relating to the rights or obligations of the parties. In this case, we believe that declaratory relief, declaratory relief action on the narrow issue that the community's discussed, possibly the city bringing one on, that is, the validity under, of the DA under the particular sections that they've talked about involving the transition of development agreements and limitations on developments agreements for newly incorporated cities. We think that for the reasons that we've said before, that the DA is valid, for those same reasons, we think that a declaratory relief action would likely not result in a declaration that the DA is invalid. And at the same time, we would caution that if the city were to pivot and from the direction that it's given to staff to prepare findings recommending approval for this project, and instead to pursue a declaratory relief action, and, and not do that, that the developer would likely raise additional arguments that the city had further caused it monetary damages by additional delay and violated other obligations and, and rights that it has under the terms of the development amendment. So that is your report on declaratory relief.
Thank you, Adam.
Okay, just a few short slides to wrap it up. In terms of environmental, the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15183. The proposed project has been reviewed and determined to be in conformity with what was reviewed in the original EIR for the villages of Zimphondale Special Planning Area, and no additional secret review is required. So council, council action this evening is to determine the project exempt from CEQA and adopt the resolution for the Stone Creek Industrial Center Major Design Review Amendment Project, subject to the findings and the project plans, which is Exhibit A, and conditions of approval, which is Exhibit B. That concludes staff's presentation. And again, the applicant team is here and they do have a presentation they would like to make.
Okay. Let's hear from the applicant. George?
I don't have a presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Oh, okay. Well, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Then we'll ask if the council has any questions for the city, for city, city planning. Donald? I'm sorry, Donald left. Garrett? Siri?
No questions.
David?
The question about the elevation perspective, this particular graphic.
That was in the applicant's presentation that was provided to staff. That's why we thought they were providing a presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, it was. Do you have an interpretation of what this is, is demonstrating?
We may want to pull it up. I believe it's demonstrating the elevation grade change of the site. Maybe the applicant can speak to their exhibit.
So the building is sited some, I'm not sure, six or eight feet higher than the path is what this looks like in this graphic. And there's a line of sight sort of to the edge of the building. There's a berm in between. What I didn't realize when we were previously discussing this berm is that the berm actually would not obstruct much vision. I mean, this is a pretty minor berm. It's probably only a foot or two tall. I don't know, maybe two feet tall looking at this. I was expecting something more along the lines of an eight-foot berm or a 10-foot berm or something. There would be like a substitute wall, or a shallow berm that would have a wall on top of it. So I'm sort of, I'm perplexed by this as an outcome based on our last discussion.
So reading the, the distances on the side, the new berm would be eight feet.
That's above the grade of the.
Street.
Right. But not above the grade of the site. Right. Because the site is.
George, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah. So, so the berm, the purpose of the berm is to screen view, your view from Baroque. And so the person, the figure standing there on Baroque, I'm just going to say the architect has a six-foot tall person there. And you're seeing their sightline view of the building. When you put a tree on that berm, you see the effect. It screens your view of the building. Mayor Budge is correct. It is about eight feet higher than the elevation of Baroque. But the site does slope up. So the, the elevation gain from Baroque to the finished site is about 10 feet in total.
So from the level of the sidewalk roughly, to the, to the floor plate level roughly, is like 10 feet?
It's 10 feet. That's correct. Yeah.
And the berm goes up eight feet of that from the sidewalks perspective?
That's right. Yeah.
So when I was talking about it, I was thinking of it from the floor plate perspective.
I see. Yeah.
So when we said eight feet, I thought, that's going to shield a lot.
Yeah.
You know, and the berm itself shields not too much here. The tree on it would, if you had 100% tree coverage.
Yeah. I, I think the, again, this is a schematic of what you get when, you know, when you're looking directly at a tree. I think you have to then go to the landscaping plan and the renderings, the renderings that we've provided are an accurate reflection of the landscaping plan. And you have to see the density of the landscaping to then understand the level of screening that we're providing. It is considerable, and the distances are great by comparison to, I think, nearly any project you'll find in the greater Sacramento region.
Was there, is there a reason you were opposed to a wall on that site?
Well, walls tend to attract graffiti artists. And so I don't think that visually they're, I hear the community behind me might prefer a wall, but I honestly, I don't think you're going to like the look of another concrete wall. You're trying to have us disguise the look of a concrete wall, I think, an attractive looking building. And you do that with landscaping, Birmingham landscaping. That's the standard practice. To put another concrete wall in front of a concrete wall, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But if that's a direction that you want us to explore, we end up removing a lot of landscaping, obviously, to put the wall in the, in the place of the landscaping. And then it begs the question, where, you know, where do you put the wall? I suppose you'd put it closer to the bike path, which is, would be the immediate way to screen your view of, of a building, right?
Closer to the viewer, right?
Yeah, exactly.
The geometry of it?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, of course, much of that site in between is not yours. It's the, it's that bike path and surrounding area. I guess that's Park District responsibility, or is that?
Part of it Park District, but the sewer district has a very large easement in there where Super Sewer came through, from Kilgore all the way around to Mather.
I was just thinking about landscaping on that, because you mentioned, I think, last time, or someone mentioned previously, you don't have control over plantings closer to the street.
That's correct.
We can probably influence those by another route.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, George. Any other questions for the applicant? Siri?
Not for the applicant, or it is Darcy. The windows that were opaque, which you can see in and you could see out, was that for all the windows?
All the second story windows. So the windows that are up high.
Okay. Thank you.
Are spandrel?
Correct.
Which is a dark thing you can't see through. Actually, if you look at Capital Village Commercial, and they have fake windows up around the top, a lot of those are spandrel. It just gives you the impression it's a window when it really isn't. Okay. Anything else? Then let's go to public comment.
We'll start with speakers who are members of the public who are here in the council chambers to speak, and then I will go to Zoom. Marilyn Metzger, Sarah Malone will follow Marilyn, Eileen Sedolko, and Stan Sedolko. Marilyn.
Welcome, Marilyn.
Hello. Gloss over, defined as try to conceal or disguise something unfavorable by treating it briefly or representing it misleadingly. There appears to be a lot of glossing over in the city. Dermody glossed over the environmental questionnaire and the planning department glossed over its absence until November of 2022, and then glossed over the inaccurate neglected data. How long will the planning department live under the unspoken but very evident mandate? Find a way to approve it. One way to approve it is to just rubber stamp every document that the attorney favors without close examination or consideration of impact. How is it that the city glossed over a friend's business, storing dozens of vehicles behind butcher paper-covered windows, violating police and fire codes for over a year without a permit? When we were told in April 2022, it is temporary. It's still there, but will be legal soon, so the city may eventually reap some benefit from its site. Does anyone ever question or challenge the position or input from the city attorney? To say he has a strong bias is insufficient. He goes beyond glossing over other perspectives and positions. He seems to be unable to think down any other road that doesn't lead the charge for every developer to build without regard for anyone but his own kind. But you're not the residents of Rancho Cordova. We are the speed bumps and the obstacles in this game. Glossing over will eventually put the city into a lawsuit for damages for not doing their due diligence. Please do not gloss over the traffic signal issue at Stone Creek Industrial, which I guess now is Stone Creek Business Park. How much effort, if any, has been sent, has been spent to present the city council with an effective plan showing sequencing timing for the single traffic signal that is the linchpin of this project? Wouldn't it be wise to have a functional and efficient representation of the intersection and its proposed signal with timing and sequences to prove that it's actually feasible and safe for all participants before approving this project? What recourse will there be to mitigate the shortcomings after the approval if it's inadequate, but it ends up being the best it can be, but will still create dangerous and tedious scenarios? Will it mitigate trucks backing up into multiple areas of Zimphondale, or cars making U-turns as trucks turn right out of the driveway, or how safe will pedestrians and cyclists be, as every lane of traffic has to stop for them to cross the six lanes of Zimphondale or the 59 feet wide driveway? In 2019, the Baroque driveway was deemed unacceptable and was mitigated during the process known as design review. How is this major driveway signal left turn lane limited through traffic issue any different? It's a critical component for this project and this design. Please delay your approval of this project until you have in hand a workable, safe-for-all, efficient process for entering and exiting the property.
Please wrap up your comments.
Do not gloss over this key point of liability. The first casualty and subsequent lawsuit will be on the city. As it is evident, this is a hail mary last resort entry exit design for this project.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Pull out the linchpin. And John Wesley did not give you that quote. He did not say that.
Sarah?
Good evening. I'm Sarah Malone, a concerned citizen of Rancho Cordova and Stone Creek. I fully understand why the city has an attorney from the firm of Myers-Nave to represent their needs in some, but not all cases. With Stone Creek and the logistics center, I strongly feel that in these cases, there should have been two attorneys on staff. And for the future of Rancho Cordova residents, I would suggest the city hire two attorneys, one to represent the city and the other to represent the needs of the citizens. I would also suggest that an advisory board of citizens be allowed to be involved in the process of choosing such attorney. The two attorneys could then work together to reach consensus on items that would satisfy all parties and keep the city out of litigation. I ask this for the following reasons. I find when an attorney's firm that currently represents our city states on their webpage, and I quote, "We have handled dozens of matters involving successfully obtaining variances to temporarily suspend application of local air quality rules and permit conditions at administrative hearings." This flies in the face of the rights of our residents to breathe clean air. Last but not least, the firm claims on their webpage they advise on the use of. Last but not least, the firm claims on their webpage they advise on the use of exemptions and negative declarations for projects with potential global warming impacts. Please allow us to have an attorney to represent our rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Eileen? Welcome, Eileen.
Hi. So I live in Stone Creek.
You can pull those down to where you, believe me. They come down.
And it'll go back up in a minute when my husband comes up here. We're going to sort of tag-team our, to optimize our six minutes. So of the 96 conditions of approval, the majority of them are boilerplate standard requirements that have no particular issues for any of the parties involved, other than the standard requirement for permitting and construction. But among the conditions, we do have some questions. During the ad hoc process, some proposed conditions included requirements for the property owner to not just agree to them, but to participate in compliance of them. We had hoped that the city would consider requiring the developer be participatory in these to mitigate the community's concerns, since the residents of Stone Creek will bear the brunt of the project's negative impacts related to the traffic and air quality. To our point, our concerns are, in Condition 18, construction workers will not be permitted to park within the residential neighborhood. That's a great statement, but what are the penalties? I'm sure the developer agrees to this, since they would suffer no apparent penalties. But where will they park? Will the developer commit to provide alternate locations for parking during construction and include this requirement in the construction documents and contracts? Enforcement and monitoring of this condition identifies the planning department as the enforcement entity. If planning is responsible for enforcement during construction, will the city commit to initial regular patrols of the neighborhood streets to identify vehicles using the streets to park? How will they identify these vehicles? Will enforcement follow them and immediately cite them if they park on a neighborhood street? Does planning have any type of enforcement authority, or will the city simply rely on the fear of being caught as the preventative method? So Stan is going to follow me with a little bit more.
Thank you, Eileen. Stan?
And you can even raise the whole thing if you want to.
Ooh. That's fine. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. To continue. Condition 30 regarding two remote fire access driveways. Typically, I've always referred to them as emergency access driveways. So when they use a different term, I raise the question, what do you mean? Does that mean that they want the one on Oslit per Condition 36, and then the other driveways will count as the second one? Or do they want two emergency access lanes plus the three driveways? Just making, just asking the question. Condition 46, non-passenger and commercial vehicle use shall use Zinfandel for ingress-negress purposes and restricts vehicles from using Baroque, Bear Hollow, Air Park Spado, and other residential neighborhoods. It is inferred, but does not state this is for the life of the project. Again, a great statement. What are the penalties? I'm sure the developer, and again, I modeled this after the previous statement, I'm sure the developer agrees that since they have no control over the tenants or contractors and would, and I assume, suffer no penalties. Will the developer agree to include this in the construction documents and contracts, tenant leases, and possibly even sales contracts of the buildings? Because they probably won't hold them forever. Where will those conditions die? When will people stop remembering them? We'll remember them, because we'll be dealing with it every day. Enforcement and monitoring. This condition identifies Public Works as the enforcement entity. You've sort of heard this before. If Public Works is responsible for the life of the project, will the city provide regular patrols to identify these vehicles and use restricted, and using, from using restricted streets? If the city commits to Public Works doing this, how will they identify the vehicles? Does Public Works have enforcement authority to cite offenders? Will enforcement follow them to and from the projects and immediately cite them if they use a restricted street? Or will the city simply rely on the fear of them being caught to inhibit it? Don't know. I did visit the Public Works website, and they do have a Traffic Programs and Services section. And all the services listed appear to be either public outreach or administrative, no enforcement. So how will Public Works enforce these requirements? Who's going to enforce these requirements? Both this and the other? That's the end on that. Ah, I don't have enough time. The concrete wall, screen wall. What about using the standard development wall as a screen wall? It'd be a unifying element for the community. It would bring it in, put it halfway up the berm. It would screen three feet of the parking lot. It'd be very simple. It would, again, mimic what's already around the streets in the area.
Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Who's next?
Valerie Knipps-Child. Following Valerie will be Jennifer Garcia. Following Jennifer will be Paul Carroll and Selena Wong.
Welcome, Valerie.
Hi. I need the overhead.
Good evening, council members and city staff. Why is it you won't acknowledge how many trucks will be tripping through Stone Creek community? Why is it you won't look at an accumulative number of trucks from all the projects that will be tripping through Stone Creek community? I'm going to help you out here. A quarter of a million, almost a quarter of a million, for the year of trucks will be going down, up and down Zinfandel. This chart I'm using is from K.D. Anderson, January 22, '22, that was attached to Dermity's first package of 418, agenda package of 418, '22. And they used all of the categories from light industrial to high cube warehouses. So they took the highest of the trucks, which is warehousing, and highest of the vehicles, which is general light industrial. So this figure here, almost 2 million cars in a year will be going up Zinfandel, up and down Zinfandel. 2 million cars, one year, and 235,000 trucks. And I'm talking semi-trucks, box trucks, whatever trucks that are, these warehouses are going to use. And I wanted you, wanted to note that these don't include all the other people that are coming from Jackson, Elk Grove, coming south from Fair Oaks, Eldorado. These don't count those people, those commuters, the school traffic, or the emergency vehicles, or auto transporters, or regular residential. This is just specifically for those warehouses. And the traffic feasibility study in that same document said they had great charts of peak time. Well, there's no peak time at that intersection. It's 16 hours, 24 hours a day. There's trucks, cars, all day long, and it has increased. Do you, as city council members and city staff, realize what you are creating in this corridor? It's a traffic nightmare. I urge you once again to use your authority to stop looking at the colors of these buildings, at the colors these buildings should be, and start looking at the impact that you will bring to the community.
Please wrap up your comments.
Stop the projects using government code Title VII, Division I, Chapter IV, Articles 2.5, 65865. That'll help us from being under these dangers.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'm sorry, Valerie. Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
You can actually leave the overhead on, if you don't mind. Is it still there? So good evening again. Jennifer Garcia, Stone Creek resident. My first concern is, obviously, the elevation that you guys have pointed out here, or that the other team has, and saying that the berm will hide the view. If you see this person, individual, standing in the field right there, you can obviously see, that is my back wall. That is a person in the field with a flashlight. That is coming over the wall. That is coming into my backyard, that home. That is going to be right in the center, right here, where there is no berm, to obviously hide it. If you have--
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'll give you more time. Where was the person standing with regard to A, B, C, D?
Exactly right in here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. At the very top, as flat as you could go. So obviously, you can see over the wall there. And this is just a little flashlight. Now imagine that's trucks and cars. If the applicant had driven all the way around Baroque, you will see that there are sound walls. We're good with brick walls. We like the brick walls. I've made the comment of, I don't usually say this and encourage people, but be like Trump and build a damn wall. Build the wall around the facility. It will help with the sound. It will help with the light that will be coming into our backyards. My other concern is that you can ask of the city council, or city council can ask of the planning department, is these windows right here that sit at the corner for the offices and stuff, are those the glass that you also can't see, or are those full glass? Because if those are full glass intended for the front offices or whatever, those will be facing our homes and could possibly look into our yards in privacy. And then I was reading the city comment staff report, sorry, I couldn't find where it was located, I was trying to look quickly in my notes, about not being able to dig down because you're worried about stuff in the trucks toppling over. Have you driven past Bold Beauty? They have an incline. They come down. I haven't heard of their stuff toppling over. You can dig down in the street sun. By having, this example, again, puts the warehouse 45 to 46 feet high. That's higher than what should be allowed in the residential neighborhood. That is going to stick out like Bold Beauty, like a sore thumb, it doesn't belong here. You have it in the California State Guideline codes that my husband gave you earlier, before the special planning meeting, that you can deny these things on a design review for the general safety and health of the residents. I'm sorry, I didn't write all my notes down clearly. I'm kind of just, the structure doesn't clash, it clashes with the existing neighborhoods and residents. And to say it's not adjacent because of the little tiny walkpath is just absolutely ridiculous. This is going to be adjacent to the neighborhood. This is part of us. I would ask you to build the wall and just deny this on design review.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Paul?
Paul Carroll with Stone Creek. I wanted to draw your attention to Bold Beauty and the fact that in order for a warehouse to be approved within light industrial, according to the Z-Spa, all operations have to operate out of sight. They have to operate behind a wall. That was an issue we raised with Logis Center. Bold Beauty, the decision was made and approved by the council that that view would be blocked from North Mather by a public storage building that was planned to be built. Therefore, Bold Beauty did not have to block that view from the street. That building, three years later, has never been built. Drive by North Mather and you will see all the semis. Stan and Eileen talked to you essentially about empty promises. Promises that are in the conditions of approval, that say, this will be forbidden, this won't happen, hours from, you know, operating hours are six to 10. That should satisfy your noise requirements. But there's nothing in there that says who's enforcing it and what are the consequences. In 14 months, we have learned to read conditions of approval very carefully. But we have no idea how to approach the city when those conditions of approval aren't met on an ongoing basis. So some indication of who's enforcing it beyond Public Works is we ask for active enforcement. We ask for information that tells us who we are supposed to contact when those are violated. And they will be violated on Baroque, they'll be violated on operation hours, you know, as Stan pointed out, in the life cycle of this project. They may not happen in the first years, but there's going to be a lot of people living in our houses in 20 years. They're going to have the same issues. So we ask that those be identified. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Selena Wong?
Hi, Selena Wong, I'm a citizen of Stone Creek and city council, city staff. I've made some of these comments before, related to health effects of warehousing projects, and I'd just like to do that now on, as it relates to this project. Despite amazing treatments, lung cancer is still the leading cause of cancer death worldwide. In California, 70% of the cancer risk is associated with breathing toxic diesel exhaust particles. And people living within a half-mile of trucking operations have higher rates of asthma and heart attacks than other residents. While people with cancer can go into remission, there is no cure for cancer. The five-year lung cancer survival rate is less than 20%, lower than any, many other leading cancers, including colorectal and breast cancer and prostate cancer. More than half the people with lung cancer die within one year of being diagnosed. And lung cancer, besides lung cancer, asthma and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease are both long-term, potentially life-threatening conditions. They, in these conditions, airways are narrowed, breathing is difficult, especially if exposed to environmental triggers such as diesel exhaust. Both can be managed and controlled, and asthma may go into remission, but again, there is no cure. Both conditions have long-term effects, including permanent structural changes to the airways at cellular and tissue levels. And over time, it increases your risk for infections and for heart attacks, stroke, and long-term cardiovascular disease. Suffice it to say, I'm flabbergasted that you are bringing in toxins, known toxins, to my neighborhood and my community and my home, given that there is an elementary school within a mile of this project, and Goddard School and the senior residents are both on Zinfandel Drive, where numerous trucks, as you've just heard, will be traveling. I'd like to know the specifics, specific tactical mitigations that will be part of the design, since we are told that only design reviews in scope. I'm not asking rhetorically. I'd really like to understand what the mitigations are for particulate exhaust. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. Anybody else?
Our next speakers will be Brenda Gustin, Alicia Abbott, Helen Wayland-Bashaw.
Welcome, Brenda.
During the May 15, 2023 city council meeting, a recording of minutes at 3:19, discussion ensued regarding the filing of a petition for declaratory relief in order that a judge may decide whether the development agreement between Dermity and the city of Rancho Cordova is legally enforceable. Councilman David Sander asked city attorney Adam Lindgren to comment. Mr. Lindgren stated that he would prefer not to answer on the fly. He stated that he will put it in the next staff report and that he is not averse to telling the community. I didn't locate that in his comments in the staff report, yet thank you that he addressed it tonight in his comments, but I apologize, I was not able to hear it, wasn't able to be here. I've witnessed in these chambers acknowledgement that the city does not always follow up in the review and/or renewal of annual contracts, even when such are part and parcel to contractual agreements. Therefore, I request the city attorney, the city council members and staff, follow through with-- follow through with due diligence to answer all questions posed at these meetings, and specifically this one. Clearly, the legal status of the Dermity Development Agreement is subject to conflicting legal opinions. Opinions of lawyers are not law. Judges decide the law. In this matter, the city council cannot know for certain what the law is until determined by a judge. The city council cannot in good faith be genuinely certain of the law in this matter until instructed by a judge, and to act otherwise is irresponsible. While this may put the project behind the developers' hoped-for timelines, the people living with this development as proposed will live and breathe the effects every day for decades to come and may experience adverse health effects for the rest of their lives. To not update an EIR based upon an uncertain legal status of a decades-old development agreement is an improper risk benefit analysis for the community. The fundamental legal question associated with this proposal as presented to the city council is not based on law, but a legal opinion. A clear statement of the law from a judge in this matter will serve in representing both the citizens of this city and the developer of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Alicia? Welcome, Alicia.
Hi, my name's Alicia Abbott, and I am a resident here in Rancho Cordova in Stone Creek. And I just wanted to say I experienced, I've observed something on the twenty-fifth of May. I believe Navigator, it was their last day of school, and I'm taking my son to school, and we're driving up Bear Hollow. And a young child, on his way to school on his bike, was hit by a car. And what flashed through my mind immediately was, if this was one of those big rigs, it would not have turned out the way that it did, because fortunately, the boy's bike was really mangled up, but he wasn't injured. But that would not have been the case if it was a big rig. And this child had, you know, of course, you know, we had the paramedics came, the fire department came to check him out. His parents are rushing over. And the person that hit him, you know, of course, was calling to get help and everything. But it just would not have been the same. And so I know that you guys have not taken into consideration for the health, for traffic, for safety, for everyone to breathe in the air, for the pollution and everything. Unfortunately, you guys didn't take any of that into consideration. But what are you doing to ensure the safety of children who are going to be traveling to school, riding their bikes in the neighborhood, for their safety? Because there's just no possible way that the situation would have had a positive outcome if it were a big rig. And I'm just really disappointed that the people that are appointed here to serve our community have absolutely no care for the people that live here and that are raising their families here. And it's very obvious, and it's just very disappointing. And so I want to know what you guys plan to do to ensure the safety of the children, because they should have a right to ride in and out on the bike trails and back on the streets and go to their home and go to their school, because that's why people paid to live in this community, and you're taking away that safety and that freedom for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Welcome, Helen.
I am Helen Wayland-Bachar, and I do not live in the community, but I have supported you with six hundred dollars for your attorney fees. Thank you very much. Okay, so I am going to, I've listened to everybody, and Brenda probably hit the nail on the head. Think of it this way. If you were building your own house and you found out that there were some illegal activities happening, would you continue to build that house and then go after court later? No, you wouldn't. You'd stop where you are, get the only opinion that counts, and that's a judge's opinion. Everything else is opinion. They're not educated. The judge does the letter of the law. So, you've, they brought up various things about, it should have been sunsetted because they didn't meet the requirements, that the city allowed an extension. That was after the deadline of the agreement. So, you're only opening up the citizens for liabilities, because it appears to me the citizens are the one that is absorbing the cost to do, to fight a build that is wrong, that is apparently out of the legal timeline. And you're putting it on the citizens to do the work the city should have done. We pay your salaries. We have an attorney that we hire. That's his website, talks about, he represents companies that are fighting CEQA. Looks like conflict of interest to me. With Nuss said on that, I'm going to hit several things. The berm. They showed a picture of a tree on a berm with all these trees around the building. That's twenty years' worth of growth of those trees. You're not going to get that here and now. So, get out of your fairy tale land. Once you get a disease into the trees, you lose the trees. So, that's another twenty, thirty years down the line. Let's look at the vehicles that they use. In a lot of commercial areas, when a big rig backs up, you hear a beep, 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 beep. So, have we taken into consideration that those vehicles are going to be beeping? Probably not. That's very annoying. I don't care what anybody says. You council folks, excluding Garrett, because he's the only one that seems to be backing us, would you like to live in these communities? Would you like to live next to this warehouse? This is an ungodly sight, and the fact that we now found out that a child has been injured in the area, it's like buyer beware. Council people, make the decisions that you need to make now. Let the judge make a ruling on whether the contract should have been sunsetted. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Anybody else?
Mayor Budge, those are all the speaker cards that I have. I'm going to go to Zoom, and then we'll go to the emails that I've received. E. Weiniger, Eric, I'm going to unmute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Eric, welcome again.
Hi, can I finish my first comment and then go to the second one? Okay, thank you. So, the theme of my first set of comments was regards to the overall process, that it appears that the process isn't really working as everyone would expect. It's the tail wagging the dog, where the city attorney has asked for its opinion, and that is what is implemented. And this disconnect, the contradiction between what the city, what is expected to be done, city codes being followed, is evidenced by all of the realistic, idealistic, rather, and forward-thinking city plans that lay out all sorts of grand measures and thoughts, but then the specific ones that get easily waved away. And who does that waving? The city attorney. One question that was raised recently in regards to questions that came up in the last meeting was, are the community's questions being answered? Our answer is no. Our questions have not been addressed. There are numerous instances where our concerns have not been addressed at all. For example, again, has anyone, and I say anyone, challenged or addressed our science-related questions related to air quality impacts? No, they haven't. And this is just not a technical legal question. This is a real moral question, as Selena brought up. And that brings, my last point is, after watching instance after instance of our concerns being ignored or waved away, we all can only conclude that the city attorney is biased against the very people he works for. I conclude that this is an instance of ideological capture, where the ideology that one favors has captured his mental model and perspective of the world such that he can see things only one way. I'm told that the city attorney is subjective, but please, 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 show us evidence of this. All I see is agreement, both overtly public and implied, with the position of developers, and none that favors us, those who should really matter. There are always two sides of every argument. Why do we have to pay out of pocket for our attorney to get them considered? The upshot is, is that this worship at the altar of being business-friendly will damage this neighborhood. And already, I'm hearing more people, more talk of people moving away. When will the city council stand up and take back control of our city from the attorney and from decades-old developers agreement? You have the power and the mandate to do so. Please put on your symbolic robes of your power and exercise it. My second set of comments relates to this specific project, the Stone Creek Industrial. By reference and by specific mention tonight, as was done by Mr. Arthur Kuhn in a letter to the city council in regards to Logistics Center and Stone Creek Industrial, we, the community, seek to incorporate into the record by reference for Stone Creek Industrial, all the commentary and communications that reference similar issues, including, but not limited to, CEQA challenges, cumulative impacts from projects, Sacramento Metro Air Quality Management District regulations and guidelines, the fact that the EIR is inadequate, incomplete, and fossilized, air quality impacts, diesel particulate matter, increased traffic, safety of pedestrians, noncompliance with California code elements, noise effects, decreased home values-
Please wrap up your comments.
Proximity to schools and residents, general and specific health issues related to air quality, abuse of discretion, inappropriate consideration of litigation threats, all the things that we raised in our appeal but were ignored, and again, waved away.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
The next speaker is Barbara. Barbara, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Yes, indeed. Okay, thank you. Never know with Zoom. First, so this is Barbara. First, I'd like to thank all of the residents and everything that they have done, all the research, all the participation, and everything else on this matter. I know it's taken, I don't know how many hours, and time, and money, and everything else. So, thank you to all of you. As to city council, although I've been a resident of Stone Creek for over twenty-three years, the warehouse situation is the first time that I've participated in city council meetings. Good or bad, I don't know, but it's the first time I've participated. Sadly, all the experience has shown me is that money talks. The depth of my disappointment in the whole process is unreal and surreal. Clearly, residents' health and welfare and the needs of the residents are irrelevant. Our opinions and pleas have fallen on litigation-fearing ears. Not to be rude, but city council at this point should just wear chicken costumes from now on. You, except perhaps city council member Gatewood, who seems to have always been on our side, are not here for your residents, not here for those who elected you, and you hide behind the city attorney and bow to Dermity. The residents' time and money has been a waste. You were never on our side, and I'm looking forward to moving out of Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Anybody else?
The next speaker on Zoom is Jim Stein. Jim, I have unmuted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Jim Stein, I live in Anatolia. And I'm just coming to this issue relatively recently, not fully informed, but I just want to say I support the concerns of the Stone Creek community as they've raised them about the project. This is not something that will necessarily only affect the residents directly surrounding the project, but all of Rancho Cordova, and certainly all of the southern part of Rancho Cordova in terms of traffic and other issues. And I would just want to support the recommendations to pursue this issue more assertively and aggressively with, in the courts, perhaps, and with a decision by a judge. I think there's substantial enough concerns and opposition to this that the city council should fully, should take all measures in trying to resolve this and what it can do. Also, the issue of the wall, as I've heard it, I would also support that the project developer, you know, put a wall on that berm. I think the concerns about the landscaping as a sufficient barrier are realistic and worth more negotiation with the developer. So, just, also, this is an issue that is not only here in Rancho Cordova. You may be aware, but I mean, Consumer Reports and others have been doing some research on Amazon warehouses around the country. I think I read an article about an Amazon warehouse in New York, in New York City area, of course, a much more urbanized area than we have. But this is not something that's confined to us. It's something that they were, I think, all confronting as consumer practices and habits and use of e-commerce, you know, have taken over. So, let's deal with it in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else?
Those are all the speakers in Zoom. The city clerk's office also received a number of public comments via email. I'm going to go ahead and read those names, just as other public comments that have been received for other items. Those public comments have been distributed to the city council. They've been printed and placed in a binder in the back of the council chambers, and they have been placed on the city's website as well. Individuals that submitted public comment for item eighteen point one are as follows. Valerie Knippschild, Jennifer Garcia, Tara Colvinbach, Marilyn Metzger, Greg Mylenberg, Alan and Melissa Bosper, Lisa Burns, James Garcia, Kate Carroll, Sarah Malone, Stanley Sedelko, Eric Weiniger, Brenda Gustin, and Lisa Phoenix.
Okay. Thank you, Stacy. Questions or comments? And we don't have Donald, so, Garrett?
I'm just going to go with what questions. I don't have any questions. I think my citizens have done an excellent job of putting forward what the bosses want. You've done enough study. This is crazy, what Jim did on his own time. The fact that you've had to get your own lawyer, and the fact that you've brought up some interesting questions. I think everyone's very concerned about safety. That's terrible that a kid got hit. And even worse, if it had been a warehouse, I think our city would have actually caught fire and exploded. Yeah. I think the berm is nice if you want to put lipstick on it. I'd literally, just, you know, going along with what the citizens say, I believe in everything they've done. I think they've done the proper amount of research. And honestly, I think that I'm going to side with them always. It's my job. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett.
I do appreciate all the comments from the residents. And of the many and the amount of investment that you guys have done, a lot of the research that has been done, I try to see if there's any agency that would back it up, the air quality, like, we've had males with a lot of research on the air quality. But for us to take that into consideration, it has to be verified or ratified by another air quality agency. And unfortunately, that has not been the case. I want to let you guys know that that's one thing that we have seen. You know, what can be done based on the multiple research sitting here on this side of the table. The one question that I would like maybe answered at the end of this is the one that was brought up on condition eighteen and thirteen, a thirty, on like, what is the city doing about, you know, the penalties of, you know, if they do not obey what they have in, what we have in this agreement, so, for the conditions of approval? And three, on the wall, what are the conditions in terms of, do we, I mean, that seems to be a request from the residents. In order for the city to even consider it, or for the developer to consider it, do you have to then look at the majority of the residents that are in that area? Or how, what's the way to go about doing that? Those were my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Siri. David?
There were a lot of good questions raised by the community members here. So, Albert, are you in the room? You come up. Marilyn has done, over many, many meetings, a remarkable job looking at traffic. I don't know what she did as a career. I don't remember. But she has often questioned, you know, the ability of trucks to do U-turns, how trucks will navigate in and out of the site, very similar questions, that I'm not going to reiterate all of them here. We've seen in email, and, you know, they appear very credible. I know that you've done some traffic modeling to figure- I know that you've done some traffic modeling to figure out what exactly the stretches of Zinfandel needs to look like to try to function. Can you comment at all on sort of the things that have been done here? Sort of summarize how we tried to mitigate traffic? And the impact of trucks doing turns?
Yes, I'd be happy to. And good evening, Mayor Budge and members of the council. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And Katie Anderson did an analysis of the entire corridor and found that the corridor overall, particularly at this location, operates very efficiently. And with... So, the entire corridor operates very efficiently. It is not heavily congested. And another item to keep in mind is that industrial traffic generates relatively lower volumes. And so, I do believe that at this intersection, with the efficiency of the corridor, and particularly this location, that it can be designed in a safe and efficient way.
So, I know some uses that people wouldn't expect, like physician offices generate a massive amount of traffic. Medical clinics, for example, where people are in and out every 10 or 15 minutes. It's just a lot of traffic. How much was Zinfandel designed to handle? Do you happen to know off the top of your head?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. But as we compare different use types, certainly retail is amongst the highest use types. And the corridor was designed for a much larger amount of retail uses. And we did do an in-depth analysis and report out at a previous council meeting about traffic generated as a part of this special planning area and traffic generated in the region. And particularly within this special planning area, there is, we have seen a reduction of particularly retail, an increase in residential, and a lower overall traffic volume than was originally expected to be experienced by Zinfandel Drive.
Yeah, I lived in this neighborhood just around the time Zinfandel was punched through to Y-Rock. And I, I'm sorry, Douglas. And I expected, because of the development going on in Anatolia, a lot of traffic, you know, to use that corridor while I was living there. And for whatever reason, it didn't. But long term, we still think this is going to be a very high-volume traffic corridor because of the pressure of traffic and development from the south. Is that right?
This corridor is designed as a six-lane thoroughfare, so certainly there will be traffic commensurate with a six-lane corridor. Looking specifically, however, at this intersection, the actual volume of movements at this particular, at the south driveway, is relatively low for an intersection of this type and will be designed to handle that traffic.
Okay. Is there a turn lane designed into this? Or something that gets a truck out of the main flow of traffic while it's trying to navigate a turn? Or how did we try to accommodate that?
Great question. Thank you. And southbound, a portion of the median will be removed. That median is about 12 feet wide. Plenty wide, just to give you an idea, 12 feet wide, that's the width of driving lanes on the freeway. So, it's plenty wide for a truck. There'll be a 12-foot-wide turn lane, southbound into the driveway, that will be completely out of all of the through lanes, so well-not-obstruct traffic. Prelimarily, we're looking at a little over 300 feet for the length of that pocket. But additional analysis will be done before the final design is completed to make sure that we have the total length of the pocket. Also, in this case, the distance between that south driveway and Baroque is several hundred feet. So, there's no constraint in making that turn pocket long enough to hold trucks or vehicles in order to get them out of the through traffic.
Because you could potentially have several trucks stacked up trying to make the turn, waiting for a signal or something.
That could occur. There is, typical analysis indicates that trucks usually don't come and go in the peak hours focused as do more cars. It's more spread throughout the day. But certainly, you could end up with multiple trucks queued in that turn pocket, and the pocket would be designed to handle that.
All right. Thank you, Albert.
Thank you.
I'm not sure who I can direct this to, but there's a general theme here among commentary of empty promises. Like, the parking-by-contractors example is a good one. You know, who enforces that? We include it as a requirement, it's one of the conditions of approval. Who actually goes out, polices that, and decides that's a violation? And then, if so, what do we do about it?
So, I think I'll let Darcy start, and then I will finish that one.
Thank you, Micah. So, conditions of approval are enforced collaboratively through various departments within the city. Additionally, if it is a condition of approval that involves an outside entity, we work with them as well. So, for example, if they're violating dust control measures during construction, we're going to work with the air quality district with our Public Works Construction Team. But generally, how it works is someone could either contact planning. Sometimes they contact planning, sometimes they contact Neighborhood Services, and they'll file a complaint. That complaint gets addressed in a few different ways. Sometimes there's a courtesy letter. Sometimes, we, as the planning department, reach out to the onsite contacts that we have to try to address the situation immediately. If that can't be rectified, the Neighborhood Services steps in additionally, goes to a notice and order, and there's fines that are assessed with that. So, it's typically 100 for the first violation, 200 for the second, 500 beyond that. And they can be assessed $500 per day per violation when they get to that point.
And that's like a standard in California code or something?
That's the standards that we have in our municipal code.
Okay. And those can actually be altered after this agreement?
Correct.
And still apply to it?
Correct. If the council chooses to modify those fines and how they're enforced and the process, we can do that, and it would apply.
Similar to penalties, perhaps, for, you know, trucks driving when they're not supposed to drive, or sound when there's not supposed to be sound. Anything like that is alterable outside of this agreement, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, just to follow up on a couple of those things. Some of those tools or some of those teams that may be different on who does the enforcement, whether it's code enforcement or the police department might be needed for some of those more moving violations type of activity. And so, there is a distinction a little bit between where that might be enforced. And I think some of the fines and fees, fines and issues could be changed in our code for some of the code enforcement ones. Some of the moving violations, one maybe dictate a little more by state requirements and state code, so that's something we'd have to look at for, depending on what the issue is. I will mention, as part of our budget for next year, we did actually add additional positions within our budget to account for additional traffic officers in the police department and additional code enforcement officers in the, in Neighborhood Services to deal with some of these specific issues and specific things in these items. So, we are adding to adequate capacity to focus on this issue, both in this area and the citywide as well.
Through the mayor. I would also add that in the building permit for the project, we could also be sure that there is adequate parking on the site during construction for all construction, traffic, all construction vehicles, so that they don't stage on the city right-of-way, so that they stage or do any temporary parking on the site itself. I think the building team could work with them to impose that requirement and be clear about that. We could also perhaps include a condition in the, that would go on the building permit that would then pass the fine directly on to the contractors who violated those construction parking requirements as well.
So, with regard to the issue I raised earlier about the elevation perspective in that diagram, Darcy, I, for one, would prefer, I think, a wall over just landscaping on that berm to try to impede the view. I think the idea that that wall matches the rest of what we see in Stone Creek makes more sense to me than hoping with, like, fingers crossed that trees will be obscuring the building enough. I think more can be accomplished with that wall versus just landscaping. I heard the applicant comment on it as sort of an either-or. Is this a point for negotiation still at this point? Is this something he can accept on the spot?
He certainly could, yes. And then, we could craft a condition that he'd have to work with staff because, well, obviously, with the width of the berm, we're going to have to look at how that would accommodate a wall as well as any landscaping.
And just to be clear procedurally, we would not bring back the revised landscaping plan to council. But you are saying that there would, in your opinion, there would need to be some of the trees, some of the landscaping eliminated to accommodate the new wall?
Yes, quite possibly there would need to be.
But that the landscaping plan would then be subject to final approval at a staff level?
Correct. We would review that during improvement plan and building permit phase.
So, is there a comment now from the applicant on that point? Or do we leave that to staff? I think...
You can certainly ask the applicant to...
George.
I think that was part of my question, too, right?
Yeah. There's a lot of interest in the wall, George.
I think it's just always there. You can sort of rely on it blocking a view.
Yeah, we're happy to put the wall up, and we'll work with Darcy's team to figure out the best location for it. I think my comment about it eliminating landscaping is that on the project side of the wall, we would transition away from trees to more shrubs and no-mow grass and other types of ground cover. On the residential side of the wall, you would typically include vines and trees and stuff like that spaced along the wall. But, yeah, that's an acceptable solution.
That makes sense. Yeah, I don't think you would want an ugly blank field on your side of the wall any more than the residents would on theirs.
Yeah, again, we just go to a lower shrub on the other, on the project side of the wall, if you will.
Through to the mayor before George leaves.
Sure.
The council may recall, it was Mrs. Garcia who mentioned at the prior meeting a request regarding the timing of the wall, if I remember correctly, that the wall be constructed...
Along the court?
Prior to building permit issuance rather than prior to occupancy. Would you care to, if we're clarifying the issue of a wall, shall we address that issue? Did I catch that comment correctly?
Court?
That was the one on being...
No, no, that's a different wall.
That's a different, that's a wall.
It is a different wall. But you could address that point now.
The timing of the wall might be one that you want to be sure you and the community are clear on.
I can address that. So, I mean, I think, again, we'd love to work with Darcy's department on this and our contractor. But logistically, you're going to want to, you have to grade the site first. And then, once the site is graded, that would be a grading permit. We, I'm not sure how the city does this. They could issue...
Let me clarify. It's the wall on the north side of Baroque, sort of at the end of the cul-de-sac. That wall, not the one we were just talking about closer to your building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They were requesting, in an earlier meeting today, before our closed session, they requested that be done before the construction rather than after because the current condition says at occupancy.
I think you switched walls.
I did.
Okay.
I think that's what Adam was doing.
He switched walls.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Yeah, sorry.
As long as that, as long as that wall area does not require any grading, that can be built in advance, for sure. Right? But then, the wall along Baroque, that would follow rough grading, and then, they would go and entrench the foundation and build the wall. That could certainly happen before the bulk of construction begins on phase one.
Yep. That sounds like the best we can do with the walls.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I still have other comments, but if there are any other questions? This has been, you know, the series of warehouse proposals have been extremely difficult. I don't think anybody who's sitting up here at this dais is actually in favor of these projects. I think residents have, with their frustration, sort of assumed that we were. But you also have to know that we have a lot of information, a lot of advice, a lot of insight about the challenges we face in trying to oppose these. So, as most of you understand, what is in front of us is actually just design review. Under state law, under the law that we all have to live under, we do not have the ability to just say no to the underlying use because that has been set already. We cannot just arbitrarily say we're going to do a new SEQA analysis. SEQA law does not allow us to do that. The standard for reopening SEQA is extraordinarily high. We cannot, or we could, do an EIR of some kind, but we can't apply any of the results to the project under state law. There's also no question that we've made some progress in these. We've spent about $15 million of city resources to remove one of the, I would say, most offensive warehouse application of the ones, many we've seen, from a site across the street from the school. We have set up a situation where trucks will not be navigating or driving near Navigator Elementary unless they violate the rules. And we're going to be very aggressive in figuring out how we can best apply those rules. We've put a lot of limits on the trucks, on the truck routes. We have had success in operating hours. These are not 24-hour facilities anymore. They now have some limits. Not as much as I would like, but some limits. We've made some progress on building articulation and trying to camouflage them and make them look like office facilities instead of warehouses. We've implied lots of landscaping and now lots of walls. But still, these are really not projects anyone at this dais wants. This is not great revenue for the city. This is not great economic development for the city. Some people may disagree with me. But I don't, I would never have chosen this as an option for this neighborhood or for the city. And we just feel like, at least I feel like, based on internal legal opinion, outside legal opinion, many, many legal reviews, there are no options left for the city. Someone, I think it may have been Eric, characterized this a couple of meetings ago as a case of might versus right. And in my mind, that's still what it is. This is might versus right. An applicant has figured out what they are legally allowed to do and how far they can legally push the situation, and they are taking full advantage of their rights, their legal rights. And we have to act, acting as custodians for the entire city and your neighborhood, have to decide what can we best do to try to mitigate that or oppose that. I heard people tonight saying, you know, get an opinion from a judge. We've had a lot of legal briefings, a lot of legal briefings. I would say 50% of the work of the city is on hold because of these damn warehouses and how much time we've spent on them. But the analysis there, internal and external, and looking up and down the state at similar situation, shows that if we just use design review to flat-out say no, our legal liability would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $100 million. Maybe it's $30 million, maybe it's 100. Maybe if you start adding different projects up around town, it's more. And the unfortunate result of that is a judge would then decide what actually gets built there and what it looks like. Not us, not you. None of us would really have impact. That would be a judge's decision. That does not sound like a good outcome. And the likelihood of winning these sorts of actions, very, very low. So, I'm sure some of you would like us to take that bet. That is an enormous bet that bets the quality of life for the entire city on this outcome. And again, it would be multiples of this outcome because there are multiple projects. I don't know that we have any other option. It's not the option I want. I don't think it's the option anybody up here wants. And sometimes you are just forced to take your medicine and try to get better. And I think that's the situation we are in.
Councilmember, to your point, I'd also like to add that, you know, we've tried to help or tried to see where we can mitigate this, and that ended up with us buying the two properties so we do not have to build more warehouses. That's something that we could impact.
So, I completely agree with everything that David and Siri have said. And I also completely agree with building the wall. And the thing that supports building the wall, interestingly, is that perspective that was provided to us with the developers exhibits. It shows quite clearly that you can build a wall on top of that, you can build a six- or eight-foot wall on top of that eight-foot berm and create not, create a visual barrier that is 16 feet. a visual barrier that is 16 feet above what is already, what is already the, the street level. So that in itself is going to help a tremendous amount. I personally wanted these buildings to look like an office building. To me, that would be, that would be the best, that would be the best visual impact. But there's no question that based on that specific graphic, if they build another wall on top of that berm, then that will really accomplish what people are looking for. And if they put, George can talk about decreasing the tree canopy behind the wall, but in reality, he still has an obligation to provide 50% parking lot shading with the tree canopy. And so it's not like they're going to be able to just not put any trees behind the wall. So there will still be several layers of trees there that will help to create a visual barrier. I agree with, with David and Siri. We have spent a significant amount of city resources to buy the properties that would have been the most onerous, truly across the street from Navigator. And yes, I have several kids who went to Navigator also. We've done a significant amount to keep industrial and commercial traffic where it belongs. It is, it is a fact that Zinfandel is the same size as Sunrise, but Zinfandel is in a different position from Sunrise, because Sunrise is actually a state highway, it's Highway Two. And it goes all the way from Roseville all the way into the rural South County till it deadens at the Jackson Highway. So to a certain extent, for a very long time, it is going to be much more of a local distribution street than it is the kind of thoroughfare that Sunrise is. And we have really, yes, David's right, I, you know, aside from the actual expenditure, we have spent, you've all spent so much time for, I think it was Sarah who provided us that list of suggested conditions from the State Attorney's, Attorney General's office. Thank you. They've, they've gone into all of the lists, all the conditions of approval, and it included things that we probably not being members of the trucking community would have thought of. So, you know, that was really valuable. Sorry, Daryl. That was really valuable. So, we've made some additions to the conditions of approval. Can we go ahead with the motion tonight, or do we need to bring it back?
We can work with you to go ahead with the motion tonight.
Okay.
Just a moment, and the planning director and I can collaborate on, on that suggested change.
So I think it's mostly the wall.
Yes, and please, please comment, but I would, I would, I would suggest that you would be, first, with respect to the end of Dubina Court, you would be changing the timing of Condition 93 such that the construction of the wall at the end of Dubina Court would be the column regarding implementation and timing would say prior to issuance of a building permit.
Correct.
Then with respect to the other wall-
The berm wall.
The berm wall, you would be modifying Condition Number 73.
Seventy, 76, actually.
76, excuse me.
76 would be modified to address the incorporation of a new wall incorporated into that berm.
Anything else? Anything about enforcement? Do we need to tighten up enforcement?
And, and that, just to clarify, on 76, I believe we would want to be clear that the, you would be adding the requirement of a wall and the timing of that. Darcy, do you want to be clear on the timing of that?
We could, right now, the timing of the final landscape plan generally runs with the building permit, not improvement plans. So it would, it would be, it would be included on the building permit. So we would have to show it on that, so prior to issuance of that.
And it would be modifying the current landscaping plans that are before the council, authorizing staff to modify them to accommodate the, the new wall.
Correct.
What about the enforcing of the parking?
That was Albert's comment, I think, about-
I think this is related to the conditions, I mean, this is conditions on the applicant, and so the enforcement of the, of the rules or, you know, the conditions are kind of on the city and on us to do, not on the applicant to do the enforcement. So I think we'd have to think about what, there's not really anything to put on the conditions for enforcement, but there might be some things, some direction from the council to look at our fines and fees for maybe some of these potentially in, in future discussions as well.
Except, except to the extent that the applicant hires the contractors and the contractors should be obligated to, to do the onsite parking during construction. And, and, and there needs to be a clear direction that it's not to be offsite parking.
Is that, I'd suggested that we could add language along those lines to the, the building permit, any objection to planning or from planning or public works, that we would add a condition that we would put on the, the, the building and grading permit, the building permit that would say all construction active, all parking and staging for construction activity shall occur onsite, not on city right-of-way.
That would function.
That would be Condition of Approval Number 18 that we would probably want to modify.
I think the other, just, you know, working on this enforcement, is a, is a conversation or question around how some of these conditions are attached to the, to the property and on title or on the different pieces. And I don't know, Adam, if there's a kind of way to tie the, or Darcy, as far as to tie the conditions on the title or on the property or the transfer of the property to the, you know, future owners, users.
Yeah, similar to cross-access and easement.
There is the possibility, and I would ask Leo to probably weigh in, but I have seen in the past conditions of approval recorded against the property as a requirement. Haven't seen it done in a while, but it is something I have seen done for specific projects, but Leo could possibly weigh in on that.
I would ask the applicant's attorney, any objection to including that, that the conditions would be recorded on title to the property? That's acceptable? I'm seeing a nod from the developers.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Probably suggest modifying one of our conditions at the very beginning to reflect that potentially, Condition of Approval Number One.
Okay. Anything else, colleagues? David, you had a long list.
I think we've addressed, I think we've addressed all the issues that are addressable.
Siri? Okay. Garrett, do you want to weigh in? Okay. Are we ready for motion?
And it's subject to the modifications that, recommending this, staff recommendation, subject to the four modifications to the conditions of approval that we discussed. And again, the modifications were to, modifications and additions were to Condition Number One, Condition Number 76, excuse me, Condition Number One, Condition Number 18, 76, and 93.
Yeah. Okay. Then I will move that we determine that the, that the environmental documentation is adequate and appropriate, and that we adopt a resolution for a major design review amendment, subject to the findings in the attached resolution and the modified conditions of approval Number One, 18, 76, and 93. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Stacy, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Polapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Hell, no.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Mayor Budge?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Okay, we have one more item on our agenda. Stacy, if you want to read the subject of 18.2-
19.1.
Sorry, 19.1.
Update the City Council on the competitive procurement process for residential solid waste collection and street sweeping services.
Thank you. Steve?
Good evening. Mayor Budge, members of the council, we have tonight an item to give an update on the procurement process for our residential solid waste collection and street sweeping contract. By way of introduction, our current contract with Republic Services for solid waste collection, recycling, and street sweeping expires at the end of December 2024. On January 17th of this year, the City Council directed staff to proceed with a competitive procurement for a new contract beginning January 1st of 2025. The purpose of the presentation tonight is to update council on the procurement process and schedule and provide an opportunity for the council to comment prior to the release of the RFP. And there's no, this is an information item only and no City Council action is required tonight. So as a first step in the procurement process, we engaged the, I think it's Tutalean Company to administer a, a survey. They did a phone survey with 300 respondents with regard to our solid waste services. And these are just a few of the highlights of the survey responses. So first of all, 72% of the respondents recognized Republic Services as the current provider of solid waste services. 60% of the respondents are very satisfied with the current collection programs and 31% are somewhat satisfied. So we thought that was great news. The way that we're currently collecting waste and recyclables seems to work well for our community. 80% of the respondents rated the educational information they receive regarding trash and recycling as very useful or somewhat useful. So again, I think a positive response. 64% of the respondents either strongly agree or agree with the statement that the price I pay for trash, organic waste, and recycling collection is reasonable for the value I receive. 68% of the respondents indicated all three of their collection carts are in good condition, and 23% said two of their three carts are in good condition. And we're, we're going to come back to that. We have more information about that, so hold on to that thought. And finally, 76% of the respondents are aware of the bulky item program, where people can call and make an appointment to have their material collected. 47% of the respondents have used the program at least once in the last year, but only 13% said they had actually used all three of their appointments in the past year. So again, we're going to come back to that point in a moment. The new agreement, the proposed new agreement, which would start on January 1 of 2025, is very similar to the current agreement with regard to the programs. We are proposing a 10-year contract term. So it would start on January 1 of '25 and it would go through December 30th of '24. We would continue with weekly collection of garbage and organics, including food waste, of course. Every other week, collection of recycling. We would continue with curbside oil filter sharps and batteries. We would continue with the bulky item collection program, which is three times per year, three appointments per year at 10 yards each. And that material is also processed. It's sent, not sent directly to the landfill, it's sent to a processing facility where they pull out recyclable materials. And garbage recycling and mixed organics collection at city facilities at no cost to the city. So all of the city facility services are provided through the, the service provider.
Oh, through city property, at city properties?
Correct, yeah, so City Hall and, yeah, our, the, the waste and recycling services that we receive there.
We don't bring stuff over here and dump it off.
Correct. We do not, no, but just for the, the city operations. We would also continue with garbage recycling and porta potty services at up to 10 city events per year, which again is in the current agreement, so events like the Fourth of July and IFest. The waste and recycling and porta potty services are covered at no cost to the city. The contractor would continue with customer billing, customer service, and public education. Street sweeping will be included in this agreement as it is in the current agreement, and we provide 14 sweeps per year on residential streets. There's a 40% minimum diversion rate, and which is another way of saying recycling, but basically of all the tonnage that the contractor picks up, 40% of it may not go to landfill disposal. It has to be recycled or composted or otherwise diverted from landfill disposal. We would continue again with the 2,000 cubic yards per year of illegal dumping collection, which we currently have in the current contract at no cost to the city. And finally, we would be requesting new compressed natural gas vehicles by January 1 of 2026. And remember, this contract starts on January 1 of '25, so we would give the new contractor an 18-month leeway, because it's, ordering new equipment these days has a long lead time. So the new equipment would be required to be here by Jan, July 1 of '26. This is a summary of the fees that would come through the contracts, and so we will continue to collect franchise fees at 8%, and our estimate of that is about $700,000 per year. We have a $450,000 annual payment to the city for road rehab projects, and that, in effect, helps to offset the wear and tear that the equipment has on our roads. We will continue to have a $50,000 annual payment to the city for consulting services. And then finally, the, the contractor who is successful at the conclusion of this process would pay a one-time fee of $150,000 that would cover staff time, consultant costs, and legal fee, legal costs for this process. The, the rate structure in this agreement, we will continue to have what we call bundled customer rates. And basically what that means is the fee that the customer pays is dependent upon the size of the garbage can. And all the other services, recycling service, organics, bulky item program, public education, everything is bundled in that rate. So this table shows our current rate, for example, the 32-gallon can, the current rate is $27.29. The Jan, July 1 '23 and July 1 '24 rates were, were negotiated into the current contract. So, so the 32-gallon can will go to $28.11 on July 1 of '23 and $28.95 on July 1 of '24. And then in the RFP document, in the responses, we will then be asking proposers to, to specify their rates that would take effect on January 1 of '25 for those bundled rates. We will continue to have an annual rate adjustment in the new contract on July 1. We are using a little bit of a different mechanism. There is a, an index published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics called the Water, Sewer, and Trash Collection Services Index. And we will use that index for our annual rate increases. The annual adjustments would be capped at 5%, and in any year, if that calculation exceeded 5%, there would still be a 5% cap, but the, whatever excess amount would roll over to the following year. So in no year would there be greater than a 5% adjustment. So in the RFP, we are proposing to have several rate options. And the first one is a rate option for the use of Kiefer landfill. Of course, Kiefer landfill is own and operated- Of course, Kiefer Landfill is owned and operated by Sacramento County. And basically, what we would ask is that proposers provide a set of rates to dispose of trash at Kiefer and any other waste disposal facility of their choosing. So any proposer can propose any other waste disposal facility. But Kiefer Landfill is the closest facility to Rancho Cordova. It certainly represents the least vehicle miles traveled and least greenhouse gas emissions compared to other disposal facilities. The county does offer a slight discount to their disposal fees, which we would be able to take advantage of. It's a $1 per ton discount on the tip fee. So on January 1 of '25, we'd be at $58.55, and on January 1 of '26, we'd be at $60.35. So those are the disposal fees that the proposers would include in their rate package. The second rate option that we're going to include is for new carts. And those of you of all who are here in the very beginning, our current carts are about 20 years old. They're also not compliant with the current state law requiring labeling and color requirements. The good news is the requirements for our carts, for the labeling and the coloring, doesn't kick in until January 1 of 2036, so it's actually beyond the 10-year term. The legislature has given local jurisdictions ample time to get this in place. And also, the survey data, you know, indicated that, you know, 60% of, 68% of our respondents said that all three carts are in good condition. However, we can look at this, we can see how the rates look, and if it seems to make sense to go ahead and replace the carts now, or if we should, we should push it out farther. And we'll be able to look at the rate impact of that. Finally, the third rate option is regarding the bulky item program. And, you know, currently Rancho Cordova residents may schedule up to three bulky item appointments at 10 cubic yards each. I will say this is an extremely high level of service and greatly exceeds any, excuse me, any other jurisdiction in our region. I live in the city of Sacramento and I get two appointments at five yards, so I get a total of 10 yards per year of service. Rancho Cordova residents get 30 yards per year of bulky item service, and so it's a very generous program. And in, through the survey, only 13% of our respondents said they had used all three appointments in the past year. So we're just going to ask the proposers, what if we were to reduce it from three appointments to two, what would the rate impact be? And then we can look at that and decide what makes sense. The, this is regarding the proposal evaluation process, and just a reminder, this is a proposal process and not a bid process. And so the city council is not bound by the lowest price submittal. We will have an evaluation committee, and the committee will review the proposals, conduct interviews and site visits, and provide a recommendation to the city council. But we're looking for the best combination of price, experience, approach, municipal references, those kinds of things. So the evaluation criteria are there will be an initial pass/fail review based upon the completeness of the submittal, and if there's a incomplete submittal, they would fail that initial test. Then the proposals would be scored on price, the financial stability, company qualifications, and references, experience, and track record with similar municipal contracts. And then finally, sustainability, and we're going to look at the annual vehicle miles traveled and associated greenhouse gas impacts to disposal and processing facilities. And one thing that's certainly true in California is that garbage and recyclables travel great, great distances to their ultimate location. So we're going to look at, with each of the proposals, how far that material is traveling in the greenhouse gas. We're also going to look at their public education and outreach plan and their approach. As we know, solid waste and recycling has become somewhat complicated, and I would argue that the success of these programs really hinges on the public education and outreach efforts, and so that's something that we're really going to take a close look at in these proposals. And then finally, just creative strategies to help us increase waste aversion and help us work with our community to do a better job of recycling. This is a draft schedule of the process, and we're here tonight on June 5th, updating the council prior to the release of the RFP. We're looking to release the RFP in mid-June. The proposals would be due sometime in late August. The evaluation committee would do their work in September and October. We'd be looking to be back in front of council in November with a staff recommendation on the top-rated proposal. And then we would be back in December with a resolution that would allow MICA to sign the contract. And, and the intent then is to have a year for transition. So if we are in a scenario where we are changing companies, we have to work on public education, we have to work on the billing system, the customer service system, potentially buying new carts, ordering trucks, there's a lot to do. And a year sounds like a long time, but it will go quick. So that is the intent, is that we'll have a year for transition. So that concludes my presentation. Again, I want to reiterate that the overall objective is to achieve the best combination of services, company qualifications, and price. That is our overriding objective going into this process. And again, the RFP is scheduled to be released in the next few weeks with the intent to execute a new contract by the end of 2023 with a 10-year term starting on January 1 of '25. So that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Questions for Steve, Garrett?
So once you get the contracts and all that stuff, are you going to come before so and we talk about it? Because we're going to look at them, or how's that work?
Yeah, so there will be an evaluation committee, and the evaluation committee will go through a scoring process. But of course, the city council is the ultimate decider. And, and one of the advantages, I would argue, of the proposal process is that, again, we're not bound by low price.
Yeah, that's the most important thing. Because we don't really care about.
So the council ultimately is, is the final say, and the city council will do. We will certainly come with a recommendation, and we will come with a scoring scenario, but the city council has the ability to select any of the proposals that you feel is the most advantageous.
Anything else? Terry?
Yeah, on that bulk trash pickup, I know I've never hardly ever used mine, ever. And that's three times. So as you were saying, you're going to reduce it to two, can you do like a round robin kind of thing where, you know, if others don't use it, you just have like a limited number of, X number of bulk pickups versus every household has three per year?
Yeah, I, I think we have to set it up so that each household has a limit. And, and I want to make sure we understand, in our, in our base proposal, we're including three, which is the current program, but that as an option, we're going to look at what would our rates go down, or how much would our rates go down if we only offered two? And so it is a huge amount of material. I mean, the, the amount of service that we provide in that program is extraordinary. And, and in our survey, again, only 13% of the respondents said they had actually used all three. So what we'd like to do is say, you know, here is the base rate for the three appointments as we currently have, but if we wanted to reduce it to two, this would be the, the rate savings. And we can certainly, we'll present those to the city council, and we could do our best to see what makes the most sense.
Okay. And the porta potties that you have, that's 10, is that only for like city use, or like when, you know, there's neighborhood services events, or there's block party events, is that for that as well?
So it's, 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 the way that it's written in the contract is 10 city-sponsored events. And so we have used them, again, for, we, the Cordova Community Council uses that service a great deal, so we use it like for IFest and Fourth of July, and we've used it for movie nights in the park and concert nights in the park. I don't know that we've done it for a, for like a block party, but, you know, I, if we consider that to be a city-sponsored event and they need the service, we, I think we could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
David?
You know, we've had great service with our past provider. I think there's great opportunities out there with a future provider. I think we've identified the right issues to pursue, you know, and try to keep us on the cutting edge of great services for our residents. Particularly like the support for community events, because that would be one of those little costs that just nibbles away at our ability of our residents to do great community events. So anything we can do to knock down those costs is a good thing. So I appreciate your work, look forward to a great product.
Good, thank you.
So your comment about having to transition to natural gas by a certain time, is natural gas really the best way to go? There's a lot of controversy about natural gas right now, and school fleets, regional transit bus fleets, commercial trucks. But are you sure actually, actually formalizing natural gas in a contract like this is a good idea?
Yeah. So our current vehicles are natural gas. You're right that there's a lot of alternatives being developed. The proposers are allowed to propose an alternative or an exception to any of their requirements, and they could do so. There's work being done on electric garbage trucks. I, I don't think they're quite ready yet. Electric garbage trucks do pose some challenges. There's also hybrid technology, but, and the proposers would certainly be allowed to propose that as an alternative. But I would say, you know, today, I think natural gas is the industry standard that is readily available, functional, reliable. You know, we, we have to have garbage trucks rolling out every morning.
So does it make more sense to, to put in a sustainability category and ask for their best options or efforts, and then leave it up to them? I mean, that's just a question for.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, and actually, one of, one of the criteria, yeah, we will do that. One of the, one of the criteria categories we spoke about was actually sustainability. So we're going to look at mileage, we're going to look at.
Yeah.
And certainly within the mileage, what we're really looking at is the greenhouse gas footprint. And if there was a, you know, alternative, they would, they would score favorably in that regard.
Yeah. So, so my only other question or comment really has to do kind of with customer service. And I know that everybody who maintains a fleet has had trouble finding drivers for the past three almost years. And I suspect that our, I suspect that Republic is the same as anybody else, but what I've noticed, and a couple of us have talked about this. First of all, obviously, a garbage truck driver may encounter issues with what it is goes into the garbage can. So we understand the different types of trash vehicles, but a couple of them have problematic issues. The one that's a big box on the front end. When it runs that box up over the top, stuff falls out. And it falls out everywhere. Some of it simply gets stuck on the top of the truck, some of it falls on the street. So that would be one issue. I don't see those used quite so often as before, but, and, and I totally acknowledge the fact that it allows the driver to see what's going into the box on the front. In terms of the, the carts, obviously, the truck drivers are apparently not quite as well-trained as they have been in the past. And there's a lot of trucks discarded, carts discarded, knocked over. They just don't pick them up and set them down anymore. Things happen, and trash happens, and carts get damaged, and I'm quite certain that both neighbors on either side of me have lids that are about to fall off. So it's, it would seem that transitioning to new carts, unless you really have to because we're changing vendor, is probably a financial calculation. Is it less of a financial obligation for them to run around and replace carts when people ask for it? Or is it better for them to just go out and buy a bunch and deliver them to everybody who needs one? So that's, that's really kind of an operational thing that, that is going to differ based on whoever's proposing.
Yeah, and, and the, the carts, the way the current contract is written is that at the end of this term, which is basically now, the city has the option to, we will keep the carts and they become property of the city, or if we replace the carts, the current vendor has to remove them and, and take them away. We currently have, of course, a program where if somebody loses a cart or it's broken, it gets replaced, you know, right immediately. And, and we could certainly continue to do that for the term of the next contract. And so carts are expensive, they're not inexpensive. We are going to have to replace them at some point per state law, but this will allow us, I think, to look at, does it make sense to keep the current program of replacing them as we go, as they break and disappear? Or should we bite the bullet now and become compliant with state law heading time?
So my funny story about that, I'll, I'll never forget, when we first went to the giant 90-gallon carts, mine said City of Glendale. It was part of the molded plastic top, City of Glendale.
That came from the county, right, not?
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah, not, not, you're right, because, oh goodness, trash pickup like this predates incorporation for quite some time. So, so those would be my comments. So thank you, Steve. Let's ask if anybody else came to speak to this item.
The city clerk's office does not have any public comment for this item except for one email that we received from Valerie Knipps-Child. That email has been distributed to the city council. It is placed on our website, and it's available for the public in the back of the council chambers.
Okay, so we'll ask if there's anybody else here who wants to comment? And seeing none? Oh, Tara.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Tara from Stone Creek, and I use all three of my bulk pickups because of yard waste. I have two yard waste containers. It makes it a little easier now that you can use two of them every week, but I have a lot of roses, and those bulk pickups are good for me for those things. Now, and also the yard waste, they, I lost my cover for both of them when they took them, and they replaced them right away for me, actually a whole new cart, which was really nice. But I'm not adverse to having two per person. I think, I, someone told me, and I haven't validated this, that I think it costs 15 bucks to have another bulk pickup. I don't know how much the cost is, but it, it's, it's pretty reasonable. So, I mean, if you guys decide to go with two, I mean, I'll just pay for another one to pick up the roses.
Yeah, I've actually heard or, or read somewhere in cities, like the little pamphlet you put out or something, that you can actually request more than the, than your normal allotment and pay for it.
Right. Yeah. That's what I said, but I, I haven't asked them because I'm going to need it this year.
Yeah.
I already had three already. But, but they're, they really do a good service for, for where I'm at in Stone Creek. They're very responsive, so I have no problem with Republic.
Well, and I, I agree. In Stone Creek, we had two green carts because, you know, there was no way we could handle all the trees and the bushes and the vines and, and all that stuff. And you filled them up routinely, and that was, actually going to once-a-week green collection might have solved that. So that's, that's been a, even though the state mandated it, that's been a real advantage.
That has.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Do we know what the charge is for an extra pickup since we just started talking about that?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it is more than $50.
Oh, it's more than 50?
Oh, 50?
I thought it was 15. Yeah, I thought it was 15.
There's a per yard charge in our contract for additional service, and some people put out more than 10 cubic yards, which is quite extraordinary, because that's a big pile, and they are charged. I, I want to say it's $12 a yard currently, and.
I think there might be a fee just to go out there.
Yeah, I, I don't have the whole rate schedule in my mind, but, but yeah, that, and that's another great way to do it, is we, you know, we could build into the rate two that are built into the rate, and if somebody wants a third or extra, you know.
built into the rate, and if somebody wants a third or extra, you know, there could be a fee for that, and then the people that need it, and it's still going to, I think, be a better deal than hiring somebody or renting a truck or, you know.
Yep.
Actually, that's a good idea because, you know, that, a lot of times, you're not putting out a full ten yards. You know, you've got something odd that you need to get rid of, and it does not fit in the trash can. Okay, any other comments for Steve? Okay. Any requests for future agenda items? I don't see any. So with that, thank you all who stuck around. Meeting adjourned.